Good morning, everyone. It is nine o'clock and I'll call the February 26th Board of Supervisors meeting to order. We have Pastor Edward Shaq from Kimberlin Lutheran Church here to do our invocation. Would everyone please stand and remain standing for the pledge?
Pastor Shaq, you can come on in.
I'm here. Mr. Barr, will you do the invitation, please?
Help me, Father, we give you thanks for today, the opportunity to gather today in Kentucky County. We ask that you continue to lead, guide, and direct us during the time. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, good morning. Hope everybody's enjoying the sunshine. Been awhile since we've seen it. We'll move into citizens' time. Ms. Myers, are you ready?
Yeah, it's only me again. I was wondering, I have a, anyway, I was reading something, and where I lived previously, they have a landfill. And we still have the Speedway landfill area, don't we?
Yes.
We still own that. So, anyway, this other entity, they have it, they had to do monitoring every year and so on. And along came a solar company, and they have leased it to them for 25 years. The solar company is responsible for the monitoring of the landfill. They pay the municipality almost 20 grand a year, and so on. And would that be an option for our Speedway landfill? And maybe we should ask the joint IDA and the Appalachian Industrial Authority people to look into it, tell them what we have over there, and if it might be a possibility in the future for us to get some revenue from a vacant piece of land.
We've been looking into that. We don't have to monitor the Speedway landfill anymore. It's, that's over with. We've looked into it. I think you have to have a 138K line close to it where they can tap into the line, so...
So, it's not feasible in that portion yet?
I don't know whether it'd be feasible or not.
Gotcha.
It's on the radar.
It's on the radar. Well, that's, it was just very interesting. And I was wondering if there was any information about our feedlot in Speedway? Have we gotten any monitoring information or anything from DEQ?
Mr. Vaughn did do a follow-up with them. We requested any test monitoring reports. The response that we have received back is that they have no additional information at this, at this time. We will be following back with them and just asking to give us any other results from any test reports they have done previously, just so you can have that information.
Right. And after this extreme flooding that we've had, they really should get on with it, if it would. And when the gentleman for the gypsy moth, I have a question, if I could ask him a question when you guys do that presentation, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Randy Edwards? And Mr. Edwards, for the record, would you please announce while you're here?
Absolutely. I'm Randy Edwards with Two Way Radio. I just want to take a minute to introduce myself, my company, and the product that I've put in front of you. Two Way Radio is a local communications company serving With County and surrounding areas since 1954. Our focus is primarily communication, but also warning equipment such as lights and sirens for emergency vehicles. We have partnered with Response Technologies, a leader in emergency notification systems. The system I'd like to talk to you about briefly today is the Centurion Elite. If you take a minute to open your packets and look at this page right here, the visual will help you. Centurion Elite is the fastest direct, excuse me, the fastest direct-to-responder emergency notification system on the market. Using a combination of sensors, the Centurion Elite provides a direct connection to your communication system. These systems include wall-mounted pull alarms, key fob-like panic alarms, automatic fire alarms, gunshot detectors, door and window alarms, environmental alarms for temperature and moisture control. The Centurion Elite provides a flexible, customizable connection to your communication system. This communication system can consist of two-way radios, cell phones, email, PA systems, and even alphanumeric pagers. This sort of emergency notification system is often marketed for schools where safety and security is an obvious priority, but it is also suitable for administrative buildings, courthouses, and support buildings by monitoring moisture levels for safe record storage, door and windows for access control, and temperature for freezers and server rooms. Additional information is in the packet. My contact information is included as well, and I'm available for more in-depth presentation at your convenience. Given the opportunity, we'd be glad to demonstrate the system for you. Thank you for your time.
Hello, Mr. Edwards. Do I have any questions for Mr. Edwards? If not, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Jeffries?
Yes, good morning, everybody. Hope everybody's doing well. Just wanted to come and provide greetings on behalf of the school system, With County Public Schools, and the school board, and just extend thanks for everything that you all have done in regards to supporting our schools, supporting our students. We have a lot of successful things going on, and it's hard to believe it'll be March on Friday. It's crazy how quickly it is flying, but we've had a really successful school year so far, and we're excited about what's to come. Earlier this month, we had the distinct honor and privilege to celebrate School Board Appreciation Month at our school board meeting. And in doing so, we actually, in conjunction with our tech center and with some great suggestions from community members, put together a really nice gift for our school board members. And we decided it was also a great idea to extend that generosity to our Board of Supervisors. And so, we just have, on behalf of the wonderful teachers, Mr. King, Mr. Willis, Mr. Bolgassong, under leadership of Mr. Sykes over our tech center, and the wonderful students, we put together nameplates for everybody with the seal. That's nothing against your current nameplates. They're absolutely fine. They look great, but this is a little heartier, a little bit more sturdy, and also could be a really nice keepsake whenever you make the decision to leave the Board of Supervisors as a nice little paperweight or a desk ornament or what have you.
That's him.
Right. And so, if you would just indulge me in taking the time just to pass these out for, to everybody as a token of appreciation, just thanks. And again, this is on behalf of the students, the hard-working students, and Mr. King, Mr. Willis, and Mr. Bolgassong, and the classes over at the tech center. So, Mr. Barr, there's yours. Part of the box up here, gentlemen. You can show everything like these.
Set it up for her.
See, I didn't tell you so.
Thank you, sir.
There you go. You didn't. You didn't. Mr. McRoberts was there at our school board meeting. We store in the secrecy, and so he did your part. I appreciate that. Yours, thank you, appreciate it. One up here. All right. All right. Mr. Barr, I'm sorry to redecorate the furniture up here.
All right. When I seen School Board Appreciation Week, the month, I wondered where the Board of Supervisors was. I noticed that it was never listed on the calendar.
Thank you. I love it. Thank you so much.
It really should, you know. You may want to get a chain and just, you know...
Hang around.
They look heavy, and I don't know that I trust Mr. Hale enough to throw his at.
Not today.
So, that's all I had. Just want to say thanks for everything, and they look nice. They look nice.
That's our appreciation. Thank you.
Dr. Jeffries, thank you, everybody that participated in this, and we really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And we look, I mean, we appreciate y'all working and the school board working with us, you know, on several different projects, not only school construction, but in the community, and it's been a pleasure.
Right. Right. No, we feel the same exact way. Appreciate you sharing that we feel exactly the same way. So, we feel the best is yet to come, but thanks again for everything. Hate to run.
Before you run, can I throw something your way?
You can throw something my way, absolutely. Yes, sir.
I had a citizen that said something, the way they phrased it, I don't think is exactly the way it should be done. Anyway, they wanted to know something about the cafeteria waste. I think really what they were wanting to know about was like if you have extra food in the cafeteria, is there any way that we can work with getting that food to somebody that needs it instead of throwing it away? So, that's, I just give it to y'all, and that's a school board thing, not a supervisor.
Right. Right. That idea has been talked about, not only here, but in my previous school setting as well. There was so much, not to give an excuse, I think if we were able to do a whole bunch, we would, but there was so much red tape associated with that in regards to what gets produced, what gets served, and once it crosses that serving line, it's either consumed or not.
Right.
And so, there are certain regulations that we have to abide by in regards to USDA. But I know that just in my time here, I've talked with our cafeteria supervisor, Dr. Poole, in regards to that, and there is, you like to be able to do some things differently, but that could certainly be something I revisit with him to see what we can do. I saw an interesting story about something like that on the nightly news a couple nights ago about, I think it was an airport, Atlanta Airport, where they did some of the cafeteria food and the restaurants that were there, they gathered all leftovers and donated to local food banks and charities for consumption. So, if we were able to do something like that, I think would be, we will be doing that, but I know some things that have prohibited us prior, and I think that's still in existence.
I thought that was kind of going to be your answer, because I think I had asked this before, but...
Yeah. Yeah. But I will certainly revisit that.
I had a note laying on the bed one day from my wife that somebody had told her.
Right.
I thought I'd pass it on since you were here.
No, it's, we'd love to be able to, but it's a, but I'll certainly revisit. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Doctor.
Are there any other questions?
Any questions?
Thank you for, you know, I think these nameplates are an example of what those kids are doing at the tech center, and CTE is definitely, came a long way.
It really has.
And it's pretty amazing. I've happened to see some of the stuff that they churned out over there, and you can tell that they take a lot of pride in it. And like Mr. Reeves said, I think everybody was involved. It's pretty nice.
Yep. I'll certainly pass on, and yes, they do, they do great work, like you said. We're proud of them and all the kids. We are, now, as I mentioned about School Board Appreciation Month, it is also CTE Month. We recently celebrated National FFA Week. It is Read Across America Week as well, with Dr. Seuss's birthday being on Saturday. And so, I think maybe even some of y'all heading out to do some reading or something that...
We're not going to video that. I've had several suggestions of Dr. Seuss books.
Yes. Yes. Yeah. Well, we'll be out there reading as well, but anytime you all feel that you want to get involved in the schools, you know you're more than welcome to reach out, and we'll make that happen, as well as, you know, with the George With renovation, if you're interested in going through that anytime soon. There's been a lot of changes in there recently. Even if you drive by the exterior, you'll see some windows that are all torn, so it's pretty neat to see. So, if you're interested in that, you can certainly use me as a conduit. We'll get you with Dr. Poole, we'll make that happen, as y'all would like to make it happen. So, let me know.
Maybe our day meeting next month, we'll schedule a trip.
Great idea.
Dr. Jeffries, is that still in track?
It is. It is. Yes, ma'am. It is. I know we had a little bit of issue with the high winds that we had over the past couple of nights. Some of the stuff wasn't as secured as they thought it was. So, there was some battening down of the hatches that had to occur, but nothing, nothing was damaged at all, but just some, some debris flying around that had to be brought back and harnessed and everything, but all's well that ends well. So, besides that, things are, things are progressing. It's really, really coming together, so I'd love to be able to make that happen for y'all next day meeting, to go out there and see that. That'd be great, I can get with you and make that happen.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you, Dr. Jeffries.
Y'all enjoy. Appreciate all the work you do, and let me know if you need anything.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for everything. All right. Thank you, Mr. Barr.
Thank you. Okay, moving on into our agenda. Next item on our agenda is payment of invoice, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion of second, see any invoice any board member would like to pull out or discuss. Here and then, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is minutes of the previous meeting, February 12th, 2019, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion of the second. Any correction or changes need to be made to the minutes. Here and then, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Vaughn?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Next item is old business, and the first item is gypsy moth trapping survey. Mr. Larry Bradfield, come on up, Mr. Bradfield. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, I wasn't sure how to prepare for this morning, so I brought a lot, some handouts that you might be interested in. First of all, this is just a brochure on the gypsy moth, so everybody understands what Okay, so it's an invasive forest pest, not native to our country, and it's managed under three management styles. There's eradication, slow the spread, and suppression. Eradication is out in front of the generally infested area, and that is managed by the USDA, and they try to eradicate those small populations. The slow the spread project is a barrier zone project that is managed through the Forest Service, which VDAC is a cooperating agency, and traps are set throughout the 11 states. This is the brochure about the project. So, this is a barrier zone survey. We try to detect isolated populations of the gypsy moth, and we try to treat them to reduce the development and slow the spread. That's the whole purpose of it. And in areas that are already considered to be generally infested, there is a suppression project, which in Virginia, that is administered by the local government. So, and I have two copies of that information available. Okay. Only have one copy.
I'll make sure the rest of the board gets a copy of it.
So, so we set out traps on a grid, and in Virginia, that grid changes from year to year based on the trap catch from the previous year. Could you bring up the webpage, please? Okay, and you could go to operations, and drop down, it should be a map server. No, no, the other one. All right. G N S T S dot O R G. G N S T S off that margin. I just got this name on there. Okay. Put the operations here, they're down the map server. Map server. All right. Minnesota, all the way to North Carolina. And move your hand a little bit so you can see Virginia. All right. And this, like I said, you'll see the two, two yellow lines there. That's what we refer to as our action area, and that moves from year to year based on our trap catch from the previous year. So, we, in this, the past couple of years, it's actually pulled back a little bit because the trap population's in no threat on crash. So, it's kind of moved back a little bit. And so, we're, have these treatments scheduled. People, to the second button. Layers, that layer shift. Okay. Drop that down. Yeah, there we go. All right. Go down, and you see you can turn on counties and quads. So, here you can turn on different layers, and you can see, and this, this is updated throughout the season as we get our catch information in. So, it's, can be viewed by anybody. This is information we gather through our traps, and also, there you see the areas in orange, those are our proposed treatments for this year. We have 102,000 acres of treatments for this year. And most of that is mating disruption pheromones, which is a product that's like a waxy product. It's often waxed with a pheromone in it. And that is the scent, it has the scent of the female, so we're attracting the male gypsy moth, because the female does not fly. So, the way she attracts him mate, she emits her scent. So, we spread the scent around, makes it difficult for him to get the gypsy moth. And then, if she's not mate, within a certain period of time, she will lay her eggs, and they just will not be promoted. That's why, that's why I prefer to use mating disruption. As you can see, this, this project can be monitored about a year, and of course, it gives you, so we hire contractors to set up most of our traps. And they're on the grid. We see, put up a little bit. What's this placement, sites and target circles? No, sites and target circles. Okay, now, all right, now, let's go back to the screen, the map. Zoom in to 15. So, these are target circles that are, and the circle varies in size based on where it is in the project, and the instructions we give to the trapper is set somewhere within the target circle. So, they have a lot, they have some leeway. And as you get down into what we refer to as our action area, target circles get smaller because we're trying to define the population. And normally, if we get a catch up trap one year, go back to second year, make a limiting grid, which is a more tighter trapping grid, to better define the population before we treat it. And then, the year after, we'll go in with another defining grid just to evaluate the success of the treatment that we just did. So, I guess I'm not sure, what information do you want?
How big a problem is it in With County or in Virginia?
Okay, With County is, all right, let's talk about the... Quarantine. With County is in quarantine. So, and what that means is, anything, any logs, nursery stock, or anything's been stored outside, that's going to be moved outside the quarantined area, needs to be inspected and make sure you're not transferring any ag�s, sorry, fly stations. And, and also, if I can get you a map here. Okay, this is a quarantine map from Virginia. In the past couple of years, you have had some deflation on top of the regions.
It's a large green area that was just shown on that last map. That's where you're trying to slow the spread.
Right. Okay, just turn on the project. What you see there is what we refer to as our project bounds, so we have an action area that we're currently working in, and then we have a monitoring area that's behind the action area that we actually set traps, and that is to drive a decision algorithm to, and monitor the rates of spread. So, that gets, that provides background data. Now, those target circles are larger, so, and you know, there's not, traps are not as dense, but we need that background information. And if you'll notice here, a lot of With County is in the background now because actually the action area is, is down, we're retiring, we'll retreat, and well, Smith County has a lot of treatments this year. So, actually, you're back in the monitoring area, most of, most of With County is. But that means that most of With County's got populations higher than... When populations get too high, the project moves on because the pheromones no longer work.
Right.
So, that's where With County is now. And that's what you're going to see in the past couple of years. On the ridge tops, you've seen some defoliation. And the project ebbs and flows, but generally, it's going to be moving further south and west. So, this is going to be, it's going to be an ongoing problem in With County. And if, a suppression project, again, as I said before, would be administered by the local county, and VDAC would provide technical support and help distribute any kind of cost share monies we come from the beds if they're in. But With County would have a primary responsibility for going, agn surveys, collecting any cost share monies, and coordinating with landowners. So, that's where we'd fit in in this suppression project. Okay, yeah, are there other questions?
Ms. Myers had a question.
Is this aerial spraying that the county would have to be involved in?
Yes.
It is?
Yeah.
And so, that would be out of Empire, Empire Airport? And we have the contract out?
Wherever, that would be, wherever the contract would fly out. Normally, it depends on the type of applicator that you get. If you get a teletophary applicator, they like to use a land use end that's close to their work.
Okay.
So, they might get permission from a local farmer to use it. Yeah. Depends on where the work is.
And this involves both private property owners and the natural?
Right. In a suppression project, it would be, it's cost share.
Okay.
Now, and the slow the spread project is funded with a federal grant, so that's how we get money for our work. And, and we use most of ours as pheromones. But they only work on small populations. Once population gets too dense, the mating is opposite, can't be controlled.
Okay. Seeing the board members, have any questions for Mr. Bradfield?
Excuse me, what's going to happen this year? Have you organized a spraying program for this year already?
Yes. All right. It's already, you see the areas in orange?
Yes.
Those are the treatment blocks for this year.
Okay.
Yeah, the planning has to start in November and December for the following year because it just takes so long to get all the information.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you guys are organized again, or going to get organized?
Well, this is first that it's been brought to the board. I don't know where, Mr. Barr, have you been?
I mean, it's, what he's talking about, the spraying they're doing is on the federal side. There's not any county program right now on the suppression side.
That's right.
On the federal side, they have been spraying in the national... On the federal side, they have been spraying in the national forests, primarily in some areas for.
Well, and private land also, but in this area, just how it happens, what's where the populations are, is in the national forest. It just so happens, that's where the issue is right now. And Clinch Mountain Wildlife Management Area's got a pretty big issue. And if you'll notice there, up in Nile Mountain, which is up in Tazza County, that's, in Fancy Gap, you get down to Fancy Gap, right along the Blue Ridge Parkway, that seemed to be a pocket that's pretty persistent, we're trying to deal with. So a lot of these, a lot of these life stages are moved by people. And particularly, it seems that the Blue Ridge Parkway, we get a lot of campers moving north-south, and these egg man, life stages are deposited on the campers that went there in, like, New England. And as they move south, or, you know, the life stages get deposited in Virginia. And that's why you see a lot of it on the Blue Ridge Parkway. And of course, on the national forest, you know, you get a lot of public areas, a lot of traffic, you know, people moving in and out. And in some areas where, you know, it could be a person who has a camper or a trailer that they had in Northern Virginia or Pennsylvania, and they brought it back for the summer. And these, that's one of the ways these life stages get moved. I think 15 or 20 years ago, they had a population up around Fort Chiswell, and that was brought in on a horse trailer that was in Pennsylvania for a year. And the gentleman brought it back to Virginia, and had a population exploded right there. So that was a hotspot that was dealt with years ago, and was managed. And, but, it just gives you an idea of how things can get moved.
And With County being in quarantine is a relatively new development. I mean, it's been.
About two years.
Two years.
Yeah.
But Northern Virginia, some of those areas, it's been, it's been a long time.
Yes.
Do you know what other counties are doing to fight with malls?
Last year, there was no suppression activities in Virginia, at county level. But it's, based on, you're going to have, it's going to be some local money, because you're going to have to hire somebody, or assign somebody to task a coordinator, a local coordinator.
Does it do us any good if we do it, and our neighbors, Tazza, and Flawkey, and around us, don't do anything? Like, we just waste the money if our neighbors don't do anything?
That's, you're going to have to assess the value of that for yourself. But last year, I can tell you, there has not been a suppression project in Virginia in the past couple of years. So it ebbs and flows, and it's based on the land, and of course, local landowners are going to have to commit some, their money. And they're going to have to determine that that's worth the money for them.
Is Farm Bureau involved with this?
Bureau?
Yes.
Anybody have any more questions for Mr. Bradfield? Well, Mr. Bradfield will, I mean, will look into the suppression program, and I don't know, I haven't much information on it.
Yeah, and, and the goal here wasn't to try to say we needed a suppression program, when we included this information back in December, just, that it'd come into us, it was just a request to have someone from B-Dax come, and just give us a little bit of information. It was my understanding that there's not a lot of suppression efforts. I didn't, I didn't know.
That's right.
I knew, some in Shenandoah Valley, I guess, years ago, they were doing some suppression efforts.
Yes, that's right, that's right. But the past couple of years, the populations, when you're in suppression area, populations will run cycles. Seven to 10 year cycle. There'll be, there'll be a buildup, then there'll be a crash. And then it'll take several years for it to come back up again. So you're going to see a cycle.
Thank you, I appreciate you coming. Thank you, Mr. Bradfield.
While Mr. Bradfield is here, I'm concerned about the deluge beetles, and the, the loss of all, of our, you know, hemlocks in, in our forests, and the downfall, and the potential fire, and so on and so forth. It is so extreme in our area. What is B-Dax doing about that? Are there studies out? Is anybody handling anything?
There's a, the hemlock program, there's only a few things you can do with it. You'd almost have to eject the trees individually. And on a large scale, there's no program to do that.
Okay, so in addition to that, I realize that they don't go, go after the other pine trees, but is there anything, are you guys studying it? Is there anything going to happen when the hemlocks are gone, that these are going to move on to other species of conifers?
I'm not aware of that. Because I know it's just a mission involved.
So you're not doing any monitoring at all about the, what were you saying?
No, because it's, you know, the, it's new in a way of controlling your other engine, ejecting individual trees.
Ms. Meyers, I mean, if you want to talk to him about this subject prior, you can, you can step outside, and we'll continue with the meeting. Okay, Mr. Barry, anything else on our old business?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, that is all.
And next up is reports, Treasury report, Ms. Quinn.
Morning, Lori.
Morning. Hope everyone's well and happy today. Didn't get blown away over the last few days, obviously, so, or at least you found your way back home, anyway. It was a little rough. Okay, you have, in your board packet, your January financial report. The consolidated account contains a balance of $72,338,538. And of that balance, the amount that is contained in the general fund is $45,940,507. Again, this is sort of like the month of November a little bit, and the month of December, we are higher, simply because our tax revenue was coming in. We were still bringing in our revenue in January, which we were able to finish out mid-January before the holiday weekend. So, right now, our balances are higher than what they normally are, simply because of those collections. Moving on, as far as referring to taxes, um, through the report that you have, our overall collection rate combined for both real estate and personal property, on what we billed out with the original billing in November, in addition to supplements that we have since billed out. Excuse me, factoring all those in, we were at about an 87% collection rate. Pardon me. As of, I read reports on Friday, which had everything entered through Wednesday, because we're having some issues on access to accounts. But as of Wednesday, we were at almost a 93% collection rate overall. So I'm really pleased with that. And that's in comparison to what we've billed. That's not in comparison to what is on your financial reports, as far as what we've budgeted. Because when you look at those numbers, they are different, but we don't budget 100% of what we're billing out. So, but we're continuing to collect. A lot of folks are getting their income tax refunds right now. They're coming in and paying, you know, paying bills here or there, because their income tax refunds are very different this year than what they've been in years past. So we're, I'm kind of seeing that affect us in a way, simply because before, folks would come in and they would plan on using that refund to pay all their tax bills in full. So now they're sort of paying in pieces, which I encourage, make payments, whatever you need to do to get it paid. It's perfectly fine, as long as you're paying. I work with anybody any way that I can, so. But that's kind of the status for us with taxes right now. Delinquent notices will be going out. My intention is to have those back to our taxpayers by the 1st of April. So generally, by the middle of March, we have to send those out. So if you start getting phone calls or questions about that, those will be going out within the next couple of weeks. So I guess in a whole, that's sort of where we are. Does anybody have any questions on anything happening in our office, or related to the financial report?
Any questions? Lori, how'd the Dropbox work out this year?
I was going to say, don't disappoint me. I was afraid you weren't going to say anything.
How'd the Dropbox work out this year?
It went fairly good. You know, we didn't have a whole lot of payments in there, but it was new, and by the time I finally got my decals to go on it, the weather went south, and you can't put decals on anything when it's raining, or it's zero outside. So hopefully, with the weather breaking, I can get the maintenance guys to, to put the decals on. So hopefully, we can push it a little bit more this year, because a lot of people are like, you know, why, why is there just a miscellaneous gray box there? So I'm hoping, as we move forward, people will realize what that is, and utilize it more. A few days, we had some of the security folks, people would come in, and they would see the line, and like, I'm not waiting in line. So they would encourage them, there's a payment box outside, drop it in there, and you don't have to wait in line. They'll check it this afternoon, they'll get your payment, and all that. So I did notice, the, the security lady, the couple of days that she worked, I did notice higher payment counts in that box, when I checked it at the end of the day. And I think that was simply because people were complaining about the line, but she was encouraging them to utilize that box. So, but, kind of like anything, the first year's sort of slow, so I'm hoping that it, it picks up. But it seemed like we had a lot more people mailing their payments than we had coming in, and definitely using the Dropbox. But, but they're paying, that's all that matters, so. Any questions?
Any other questions?
Mr. Hale? Can't let Mr. Valt get one up on you.
He's been calling me a tax hog. I'm going to lay him off today.
Well, one other note that I will give you all, the admissions tax that is added to the ticket sales at the Expo Center. Ms. Barker had received the, or the tax return for the month of January, so for, it was one event in January?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay. For the one event in January, With County's portion of the admissions tax, we received a check last week for $3,476. So I was excited about that, for it to just be one event. So, you know, with more events going on in February, when we receive the return in March, it'll be higher. But, but wanted to give you that little tidbit as well, since Ms. Barker isn't here. Anything else?
We are going to do better at monitoring that.
Monitoring.
Out, out there at the site. Promoters will, will have a better understanding of their obligation.
Right.
Thank you, Lori.
The events seem to be successful out there, so that, that's a good thing. Excited to see that. I try to follow Facebook really closely on Saturday night, to see what folks are posting. Because most of the time, it seems like most of the people I know are there, so.
Even, you know, the bad weather that we've had, and the rain, and, I mean, it was pouring rain Saturday night, and they still had a good crowd.
Well, that's good. That, that's what we, we wanted in the end with that, so, so that's a good thing. Anything else? Okay, thank you. The nameplates look good. I'm jealous.
Ms. Barker's not here, and the sheriff's not here, but Chief Foster, do you have anything? Thank you. Next is Apex Construction Committee report.
Appalachian Regional Exposition Center Construction Committee met and recommends accepting CUICO bid in the amount of $156,983.75 for the Apex Access Road in the east parking area project.
Okay.
Mr. Barry, if you want to.
Come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Mr. Barry, you want to elaborate on just exactly what this is?
Basically, this is from the, this is from the end of the existing asphalt road, next to the Apex Center up there. This is the road that runs down to the east parking area. The first part of this would be a gravel, compacted road with two inches of asphalt on it, which is needed going down that hill to keep everything from getting rutted out with the trucks and everything, coming back up it. Then from a cul-de-sac down there, all the way around, by the soccer fields, coming all the way back to the Flying J property line, would all be a compacted gravel road. And then this would give us a compacted gravel parking area, which is obviously sorely needed out there at the bottom of that hill. So this, this would go ahead and allow them to get started on that. Once we can go four days without rain, and weather dependent, and RGM can finish the last of their, moving their material down there, the contractor can get started on this.
This is, this is not a paved parking lot, this is?
It'll be a gravel parking lot, correct. The, the only thing paved will be the hillside of the road going down the hill.
Okay, and any questions or discussion?
What, what do we know about the contractor? Where are they from? What do they do? What kind of background check did we do?
CUICO we've looked into, we have worked with them before. They do a lot of rail work as well, and they have recently done some rail repair work for us, out there in the process. And that work they did for us has been very expedient. They come in, quickly get it done, and are back out. I think they were in within a week of bill issuing the purchase order of doing that. So we have worked with them before. Not in disc capacity, but more on rail work.
Okay, any other questions? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Horny.
No.
Ah.
No.
And the chair, but it's a bunch of 6 to 2. Is that all Apex Committee, Budget Committee?
The Budget Committee met and recommends the following. Approving a transfer of $5,961.50 from the Commonwealth Attorney's Asset Forfeiture Fund to 2201-470015, and to amend and appropriate the same. These funds will be used to purchase Celebrate Digital Intelligence software, and the cost will be shared between the Sheriff and Commonwealth Attorney's Office.
Okay, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion?
Is this just moving money from the Commonwealth Attorneys? I don't believe my disclosure, if it's moving money from the Sheriff's Office, but the way it's worded, it's just moving money from the Commonwealth Attorneys?
That is correct. It is, it is amending and appropriating to their budget, and moving the money in the process. And for clarification, it is coming out of their state asset forfeiture, not their, their federal asset forfeiture.
Any other questions? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Valt.
Ah.
Ah.
No.
Ah.
The chair, but, uh, next item?
Next item is amending and appropriating $2,500 to 32031-470030. These funds are required to cover the deductible for an insurance claim to repair the light tower on the LMRS operations truck.
Again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any other questions? Comments?
What, what is that? What are we?
The Lead Mines Rescue Squad, back in June or July, sometime in that timeframe, apparently, from everything I've been understanding, Ms. Collins has been working with the insurance on it, had a truck with the lights extended up and on, and did not lower the lights before they moved the vehicle. And it caused somewhere in the neighborhood of $14,000, $15,000 worth of damage due to that. The insurance has been filed, everything gone with it, there's a $2,500 deductible that goes with it. Typically, I would just look at pulling that out of their allotted funds for the year. They are currently, have received most of their allotted funds, except that, which we think they need for gas and fuel and utilities for the remainder of the year. So this is an amending and appropriating $2,500 to that budget. Thank you.
Any other questions? We'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Horny.
Ah. Ah.
Ah.
The chair, but, uh, next item?
Next item is amending and appropriating $3,000 to 7100-457055, as part of With County's contribution to producing the Withville Visitors Guide.
Okay, again, come from committee, doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion?
Will we have any ability to highlight Expo Center in there, for that money?
This money will not be just for the Expo Center, but this money that, that goes into this, provides highlighting of all the centers, all the locations in With County in the process. The Apex Authority has already voted, and even though the timeframe has sort of passed, the, the Withville Convention and Visitor Bureau has been saving a place for them in the brochure, for them to put their ad, and they are working on putting their ad in there, which we think is very important for the number of copies that this goes out with. which we think is very important for the number of copies that this goes out with.
Any other comments or questions? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Valt. The chair votes, uh. Anything else from the Budget Committee?
That's all.
Okay, County Administrators report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of items here for action. The first off is a resolution commitment for the transportation projects. VDA has recently sent us some correspondence requesting our county and other low counties a firm commitment to fund their locality share of projects under agreement with Virginia Department of Transportation. Currently, we have three projects out there, two of which have already been funded 100% by us, and a check has been written. And that is for the Grous Ridge Road Project and the Ready Mix Road Project. The other is the Connector Road Project that is out there. The, that one is the Future Road from Ny Road over to the Industrial Park. The total project amount on that is around $5.4 million. Five million, $413,500. As all of you are aware, we have been proposed to be awarded a smart scale project coming up worth approximately $12, $13 million to With County in the process. I think part of this is they're just making certain that the counties are committed to their revenue sharing projects, to make certain that that is in place to show that we will continue to be funding it, which will help with our smart scale project as well. This project has, you know, previously been approved, it is on the books, everybody's aware of it. I would just request adoption of this resolution to confirm our commitment to the smart scale project, or to the revenue sharing project.
Entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-02 affirming commitment of funds, the county locality shares of projects under agreement with the Virginia Department of Transportation, and provide signature authority. That would give, authorize Mr. Burr, the County Administrator's signature authority. Have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Horni.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just add on that. I had a meeting with the District Administrator, Randy Hamilton and Mr. Necessary last week, and they are working on developing very favorable proposals for us in when this funding would be needed with the upcoming smart scale approval of our project as well. So it was a very effective, a very productive meeting, and hopefully, we can get those details finalized. The next item of business is just another surplus vehicle from the Sheriff's Office that would request to be declared surplus by the board, so they can sell it through Enterprise with their agreement.
I have a, entertain a motion to surplus 2015 Ford Taurus. Okay, second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion?
Mr. Farland, this is, this vehicle's, I assume, titled the Board Supervisors. Do I need to read my disclosure on this?
No, I don't think so. You're just surplusing the vehicle, so it's more comfortable reading it.
I didn't think I needed to, but I.
Yeah, I don't think you're, you're not voting on money, Sheriff's Office.
I doubt it brings enough to matter. Thank you.
I'm sure by the time they're done, it's pretty well used.
Okay. Motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
The next item, that meeting last week with Mount Rogers, and they gave an update on this. But basically, you all are aware, we've had a grant that's sort of been held up, waiting for a regional hazardous mitigation plan to be approved. And I'm not saying it has been entirely their fault. The review time from the agency during the plan has taken a tremendous amount of time. But it does appear that everything is ready to go. And at that meeting, they indicated they would be sending us a pre-disaster hazard mitigation plan resolution. Mount Rogers has worked on developing this plan, it has been submitted, it's been reviewed, it has come back. I asked them if they could get that to me in time for me to hand out in today's meeting. They actually got it to me last Friday morning to go in our agenda. So I would request approval of the resolution for the pre-disaster hazardous mitigation plan that Mount Rogers has been working on, so that we can get this to them. I will have a full copy of the plan coming to you all as soon as possible.
Entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-03?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any questions or discussion?
And I will say on behalf of Mount Rogers, and I am on that board, that, you know, they did timely get in everything to FEMA and just getting the review back and then sending it back in. It took them a long time to get that in and out, so, well, get it in. And they got it out on a timely basis. Just the federal government works, don't work that fast. And several counties in our area were sort of in the same shape. They were all very critical about getting this resolution adopted, so they could move forward.
Okay. No other discussion, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Valt. The chair votes, uh. You have anything else, Mr. Chair?
Now, Mr. Chairman, that's all that I have.
Okay, County Attorney's Board, Mr. Farland?
Mr. Chairman, I have two things to report on. Well, one, just to give you an update, that I've requested information on, update for the opioid lawsuit, and have not received any information back yet. So they did respond to me and said they'd get something to me shortly. So as soon as I get that, I'll forward that on to all of you, or Mr. Burr, and you can pass it on. The second item I have for you this evening is Mr. Burr had asked me concerning the noise ordinance when you all met about adding language, about the use of firearms. There was a clause added that, I think, some citizens questioned concerning the unnecessary discharging of firearms during that 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM timeframe. Recommendation, or at least the information I received from Mr. Burr, indicated possibly adding language after that to say, unless engaged in lawful hunting, so that lawful hunting is permitted, which should be permitted anyway, because it's allowed by the Code of Virginia. I don't think it would be a problem, so, but adding that language to the ordinance, I think is okay. And I do not believe it's necessary to re-advertise the ordinance, since you're not making it more restrictive in doing that. So I think you can make that amendment to the proposed ordinance to add that extra language, and then pass the ordinance at your pleasure, or not pass it, whatever your pleasure is, without having to advertise it public here.
Okay. Well, with our County Attorney's advice, if it's the board's pleasure, we'll have that ordinance rewritten with adding that verbiage to it, and bring it up at our next board meeting.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Farland. Okay, now Board Supervisors. District One, Black Lake District, Mr. Valt?
Mr. Chairman, if you'll pass it. I know we've discussed several times about addressing some county employees' salaries in this budget year. What I've got for you is health insurance comparison between With County and the regional jail, and I hope everybody will look at that. You know, we're the third largest contributor to the New River Valley Regional Jail's budget. And, you know, if you look at this family plan, they're paying almost twice toward their employees' insurance policy than what we owe. We've got some people here that work for the county that we've all agreed that, you know, they don't make enough. We've got some people making $25,000 less thousand a year. And on that one family plan, you're talking $1,200 a month. We've got some people here that are just working here for insurance. And I don't begrudge the regional jails for providing for their employees. But we're letting them use our money to take better care of their employees than what we're doing in our own house. And I know y'all have heard me preach this, but we need to take care of our people first before we send our money up 81 and let them take better care of their people than we are. I know it's budget season, I just wanted to pass that out. I think I've asked Mr. Burr to get a couple more insurance comparisons. But if you take that family plan, based on what the regional jail's paying, that's almost a $5,000 difference a year. And you take somebody that's making $25,000 down here at the Commissioner's Office or Treasurer's Office, that's a, that's a pretty good chunk. So going forward to budget season, I hope everybody will look at that, and maybe we can make some changes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Valt. Black Lake, I mean, West Whipple, Mr. Lester?
Nothing at this time.
East Whipple, Ms. Lawson?
Nothing at this time.
District Four, Fort Chiselle, Mr. Hale?
We all received an epistle from concerned people about some activities at the, um, RIT, the RIT Department. I'd like to ask if we set up a meeting with Mr. Burr at his convenience and check out some of this stuff. This just goes on and on and on and on, it never ends. And I don't know how much of it is actual fact, but I'm sure that somebody put a lot of work in this, and we need to hear both sides of it. I think one of the problems is we have departments that are totally inflexible. And when we're dealing with young people, we all be more flexible. And maybe I'm wrong, but this policy's policy. We need to look at the situation individually and not be so rigid.
Okay. And being fair to Mr. Burr, he hasn't seen this, and hasn't seen this letter that we received this morning.
No.
No, he hasn't received a copy of it.
I have the copy already printed, so if you want to pass this one around.
I'm, we'll pass it around, but we'll send it to the Personnel Committee. And Mr. Burr scheduled a meeting sometime in, within the next time point now in our next board meeting for you to look into that and convene the Personnel Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I don't, can't remember who's on the Personnel Committee, but oddly enough, I've had some issues with the same department that I forward, Mr. Burr. So if somebody on the Personnel Committee will contact me before you have your meeting, and I can forward the information.
Ms. Lawson, Mr. Hale, and Mr. Lester, I think?
Thank you.
On the Personnel Committee. Set off from the Fort Chiselle District? Okay, Lead Mines, Mr. McRoberts?
I did have a call Saturday that the pipes were stopped at the old Stew House, at 100. And I called Mr. Burr, and I don't know what to, what.
The, I spoke, actually, I was able to get in touch with Jeff Russell. And I called you back later, and you called me back, and we still didn't get in touch. But I was able to get Jeff Russell, they were able to, they had crews out working, and they sent a crew down there to see what they could do to try to unstop any of the pipes. I don't know how much success they had in trying to do it, but they were out trying to unclog pipes. And I know that Saturday, that was probably a busy job throughout the entire county.
Set off, Mr. McRoberts? Okay, District Six, people, Mr. Horni?
Same old stuff, manure running off the beetlot, which, I mean, Saturday, it ran off of everywhere. There's probably manure from Grayson County come over here Saturday, as much as it rained. I think it come across the mountain. I have some concerns with beet auto. I mean, I don't know if they don't clean ditches anymore, don't clean coves or what, but I know this morning, well, yesterday morning and this morning in particular, there was at least three or four spots on my bus route that the water is running across the road, and I mean, it was cold enough that you had sheets of ice that you were crossing. It just seems like that they don't clean the ditches and don't clean coves like this is.
I passed a ditching machine yesterday.
Do they have a ditching machine?
They've got that.
That gray dog?
Well, you know, it's got the claw, they were, I think, when I passed it, I thought the same thing. I said, they're getting complaints. Pass along.
I appreciate that.
Anything else, Mr. Horni?
Not that I know of. While you're passing that along, tell them to check Old Mountain Road, please. I think that's the name of the road. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else.
Okay, the only thing I have, I was out running around the county the other day, and the trash at the truck stops loves is awful bad on the Lee Highway side of the parking lot. That whole bank area is covered in trash. But I think needs in.
Officer Dunford, yes.
Yeah, Officer Dunford out to, to make sure, they need to get out. After this wind, there may not be nothing left. It may be somewhere else, but.
There'll probably be new trash, everybody just come from Smith County.
But, you know, we, they need to keep, you know, do a schedule or something about picking up their trash around their parking areas and stuff, because it's getting pretty bad in all of them. And that's all I have. Going into new business, entertain a motion to approve the consent counter?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any questions or comments on the consent counter? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Valt? And the chair votes, uh. Next item's New River Regional Water Authority Financial Report. Everybody's chance to look at it. Do we need to accept this?
The authority has accepted it. I just include all of our authorities and information in there. You do not have to take action to accept it unless you also want to. But no issues on our audit.
Also have the Smith With Airport Financial Report. Do we need to accept it?
The same action on this, just for information.
Okay. Okay, next item on our agenda is to go in closed session. Under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1, Discussion of Personnel. Entertain a motion to go in closed session.
So moved.
Have a second? Have a motion, a second, go in closed session. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in closed session. Entertain a motion, come out of closed session?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We are now at a closed session. Let you on read certification.
Whereas the With County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the With County Board of Supervisors, that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. Only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the meeting, motion convening the closed meeting were heard discussed. the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the With County Board of Supervisors.
Okay, I have a second on certifying the resolution.
Second.
Any questions or other discussion? Hear none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Hornet?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Okay, you have the informational pack, there's one other thing that I'd like to have updated on, and I don't know where, you know this Stephen, or if you need to get Bill back in here, how does his meeting go with DEQ Monday on the upper parking lot gravel?
Got a briefing from him on it this morning, let me see if I can get, can you ever come in here real quick?
And a doctor ain't gonna do, to give you anything or anything?
No, he's just tugging out.
Tugging out?
Yep.
But we give that to a good tupper, I guess.
It's been tough.
I'm ready whenever you are.
I haven't been able in LA to work on it. Wind, wind should have blown some of it away, and it blew.
Well, no, Bill.
Well, Chairman, would you like an update on your meeting with?
DEQ.
Oh, okay. Yeah, what did that, what did the, what did they, went through the preliminary things I've been working on?
We went through it, so he, he said, need to do A, B, C, D, E, F, and G to kind of keep moving with the process, which is good, because I'm in the right directions anyway, I want to make sure I was hitting the right boxes before playing the mail game, you know, face to face is always better, so I'm getting close. I did find out that, in going through one of the calculations with him, I said, and I've routed this through the dryswale, which is that big area just next to the soccer field and the road. He said, that doesn't go through there, and I said, well, that's what the drawings say. Come to find out, one of the very last things that was done with Lane Group, and Jeff Spickard, the engineer of record, was to route that thing, because the dryswale can only take so much flow, he put two lines on a drawing that said, this is a culvert, put the water on the other side of the road and take it over the hill down to where that concrete ditch is that drops off the ledge down there. Well, that answered a lot of questions, why we've been having water problems at the drop inlet up there that's been overflowing in one spot. Went back to the drawings, I said, Jeff, there, there's no culvert on here, there's two little lines that look like construction lines, you know what those are on the drawing at that cul-de-sac, and we'd seen them before, and there was nothing on it, it was not called out as a culvert, there's nothing on the culvert schedule for Phase Two, but I think it was added at the very end to make the flow stuff work and the nutrient loads work. So, looks like we're going to end up having to do a culvert or put another ditch around there to divert the water that now goes into the dryswale, was not designed that way, is not routed that way, and that's how the nutrients were, so found a design error that I guess we'll be correcting now as I go through this process. So, a few more calculations, I have to do that, have to check some energy balance things to, for velocities downstream with the highway department and such as that, but I'm, I'm close, all my calculations, I feel, went through the process, make sure I hit all the regulatory rights and things that have to be done, and I reviewed those this morning before I came in here. The good news is, you know, we were worried that we might have to go buy some phosphorus credits, and he said, why don't you do a conservation area? I said, okay. He's aware of that area that we're in the future, thinking maybe putting softball fields in, but they're sitting there kind of not doing anything right now. He said, we could, could put those as dedicated conservation area, run the calculations, and maybe have enough acreage there to where we don't have to buy any phosphorus credits. Now, at some point in time, whenever you build the ball fields, five, 10 years later, you'll have to go back and review, review the permit and do some other things, but it's a way of expediting the process now. So, that was the good news, he found a way that maybe we can get this finished quicker without having to spend a lot more money. Thing about the credits, when you talk about the phosphorus credits, remember phosphorus and rainwater is parts per million, very, very small, so when you have credits of one to two, three pounds, it doesn't feel like a lot, you've got feelings that's not a lot, but when you're talking about PPMs for something chemicals, it is a lot. There's a nutrient bank in, in Pulaski County that has, now, this is a commodity that's being traded now, and they have 30 pounds. Yeah, it doesn't sound like a lot, but 30 pounds for nutrient credits is a lot, so it's a big market. And I asked him, I said, okay, I don't have a gut feel for this, how much is this going to cost? And he said that a, a pound of that can cost as much as $20,000. So, by do, maybe possibly doing this other idea he helped with yesterday, we can avoid 20, 30, $40,000 in additional expenses. So, I'm getting close, I'm going to keep working on the calculations, rerun some of the runoff reduction things, throw in the conservation area if there's enough acreage up there for consideration, and see where we're at with it.
So, what, what is your timeline of getting, getting your request to DEQ?
You better give me a few more weeks, I mean, I've got to do this, go run through the calculations, I now have to change my calculations because now there's a, a culvert involved that wasn't in the original design that I was working on, because it wasn't on the drawings. So that threw me back a, a step, a couple of days at least on running numbers, apologize for that, but it was interesting, because I'm sitting there with Mr. Chapman, I said, where is it on the schedule? And he's going through the drawings too, and says, I don't see it, I don't see it, it's not there. It was just added at the end, and between you being offense posts, he was just as frustrated with this design as, as we were with the design. Very difficult, he said, and I think that that little culvert was added at the end, put two lines on there, it's a culvert, he ran his, his reduction, phosphorus reduction calculations and routed it that way, and it wasn't clear on the drawings that it was supposed to be constructed.
Basically, at the end of the road up near the flying day parking lot area, where the, the line comes down the hill and goes into the dryswale.
That's where the cul-de-sac.
We'll have to be putting a culvert across that road to the, to the other side of the road down through there.
Or, or pulling a ditch if there's not enough cover for a culvert, whichever way it works, but we've got to divert the water from the dryswale to the other side of the road now, and that answered a lot of questions that we've been having water issues down at the other end down there, so now I understand, unfortunately.
But why, why I'm concerned, you know, and, and time is at the essence, you know, as far as parking up there, you know, the more events we have, you know, that's, that's our biggest thing right now, is people parking.
Yep.
And I know, you know, when you go to any event, anywhere, you may have to walk a long distance, but still, we have all this area that we should have looked at, who knew we'd get, you know, rain every three days, it would be pouring the rain, and we couldn't use them as gross parking lots, but, you know, as, as more events come and bigger events come, especially if you have a concert that you put on the floor, which that's already being discussed, is when you get maybe four, three, four, 5,000 people, where you go park.
Right.
And, you know, it's, we want to make this thing go, and it, and it's, by opinion, everybody wants it to succeed, we've got to get on the ball and, and get this, this parking corrected.
Yes, sir. I understand, I will.
Well, I went up there, had a, a, you've seen the Leark, that everybody that was in there, had a truck and a trailer, and then you went and pitched a TP tent, oh, that takes up a lot of room.
Yeah.
Did you see the remains of the TP tent next to the Pigilicious at the trash dumpster? The wind got it and that thing was all tore to pieces, they just left the frame there in the trash can.
It's, you won't have that if you're having a concert, but when you have a smoke cycle, you could look for that in.
Even, you know, horse events, they go be bringing trailers and, and stuff, and we've got to have someplace to park, and I know that what we passed this morning, the road leading down to the lower parking area, fixing the lower parking area, and even the road going to the soccer, you know, future soccer fields, you know, parking, that will help, but we've still got to get that, that big parking lot up there, especially when they bring car haulers and, and for the go-kart races, even the motocross, they bring haulers. We've got to get this, get this done, where we can get that parking lot gravelled up there.
I'll keep working on it, I, not as close today as I thought I was yesterday after that revelation about the culvert, I gotta rerun some numbers, but I will keep forging ahead with it.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Yes, sir.
Okay, has anybody else got anything to bring for the board at this time? Hear none, we adjourn.